Ladies and gentlemen, I'm calling this meeting to order the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for February the eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Braun?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard? Commissioner Warnet?
Here.
Let the record show that you do have a quorum.
Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We bow your heads with me for a brief prayer. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town lord. I ask that you watch over our first responders, God, our police and fire and EMS. I ask that you watch over our troops that are here and overseas as well. Please be with our elected body and their families as we're here tonight, as well as the rest of the town of Rising Sun. Watch over our citizens as we are here, in Jesus's name, amen. All right, first on the agenda is Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one, which is a fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget amendment. Town Administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. All right, so what you have on the screen right here is Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh-one, which is a resolution amending the previously adopted annual budget for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and authorizing the additional expense and proper recording of a new vehicle financing loan. So to give you some background on this, when we balanced the budget, we we did not put any loan line item in there to purchase a police vehicle. And we had originally talked about bankrolling, if you will, the purchase of a dump trailer for the public works department. As you're aware, we have moved forward with the hiring of a code officer who we have here in the room with us tonight, Mr. Gary Duffy here. In order to equip him with a vehicle so that he can go out and be able to do his code enforcement, we needed to purchase a vehicle. So the staff felt more comfortable with showing this as a budget amendment. And what I mean by that is, the way our budget system is set up, there's a lot of flexibility within the parameters of the budget for us to make daily decisions that sort of keep us sort of coloring within the lines, if you will, on the budget. And there are times when we will create new account items in the budget because we want to try to track those expenditures. So I'm going to give you an example. Let's say that we always paid for whatever bags of sand for the public works department. But for whatever reason, we decided that we would like to be able to track the number of fifty-pound bags of sand that we buy compared to the number of eighty-pound bags of sand. We might create a separate account line item in the budget that does not change the end numbers. It just gives you in future budgets, the ability, as we've always done, to diversify the expenses to better track them. In this particular case, we did not allocate a line item for a loan. So this is a little bit different than us always buying bags of sand and deciding that we wanted to create a new line item to track that particular type of sand. In this case, we're talking about a totally new expenditure being the loan financing for these vehicles. So we felt it was more transparent for us to come to the board and have a budget amendment done to reflect that. You're going to see Judy's going to describe you in a second. We've been able to do some accounting of what our expenses actually are and track that. And then compared to what our revenues are, we can still pick up this expenditure for the loan without affecting the bottom line numbers of the budget. And generally, how that's being done is, as you're aware, when we project budgetary expenses for things like street repaving and vehicles, we don't always know, especially in the world of street repaving, we don't always know what we're going to encounter when we're out there. And so whenever I do the projections for street repaving, I will include a certain amount of money on top of that to give us the flexibility to go in, go in and make those necessary upgrades. They're always reflected in the budget, and sometimes we come in under that projected amount. What I mean by that is the annual payment could end up being lesser than what we originally anticipated because we didn't, we didn't borrow all the money we thought we were going to borrow as a cushion. So that's the, that's the case here. Under our two thousand twenty, twenty-one paving program, we balanced the budget with an annual payment of a hundred thousand dollars. It turns out we only got to commit at about eighty-nine thousand dollars. So that's going to yield about ten thousand dollars to the good that can offset this nineteen thousand dollar loan payment that we have to make. On top of that, we had a surplus already in the debt service category. So combined together, there's more than enough money to absorb this loan payment. Again, we just wanted to have you guys, for transparency, be able to see that and approve the budget.
Would you like me to read it into the record?
Well, I'd like Judy to give you guys the presentation so you can follow along in your budget where the changes were made.
Yes, if you go to page fourteen, the page numbers are at the upper right-hand corner. When we originally put together a debt service budget, we were looking at the two thousand twenty-one street repair loans. And at that time, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars as being the annual payback on that loan. As the loan was finalized, we were going to be paying back eighty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And as Calvin said, we balanced the budget with a surplus of sixteen thousand seven hundred and one dollars and twenty-six cents. So the additional monies that we were able to have for the budget from the hundred thousand dollars versus eighty-nine thousand and using a nine thousand dollars of the surplus that we already had, we still balanced the budget with a surplus of seven thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents and picked up an additional loan that will have two annual, will have one annual payment of nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents. And that'll get the dump trailer, the pickup truck, and also the new police car.
Thank you. Would you like me to read it to the record?
Sure.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one, which is a resolution amending the previously adopted annual budget for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and authorizing the additional expense and proper recording of a new vehicle financing loan. We all know the boiler point, boiler plate, so I'll skip down. Whereas Chapter nine of the Code and Ordinances of the Town of Rising Sun, titled Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade, contains provisions that grant the Board of Commissioners with the power of appropriate municipal monies for any purpose and to levy, assess, and collect ad valorem property taxes or any other type of tax allowed by law, and to have general management and control of the finances of the town. And whereas the town has identified the need to purchase a new dump trailer for the public works department, a replacement police vehicle for the police department, and the acquisition of a utility trailer for the code officer. And whereas in the past, the town recognizes the benefit of making these larger purchases by way of a tax-exempt financing and has secured a loan proposal from tax-exempt leasing corporation that has previously provided similar leasing arrangements for the purchase of town vehicles. And whereas the loan will be for sixty months and provide for roughly eighty-eight thousand of financing for the three above distraught vehicles with an annual premium payment of roughly nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents. Whereas since this loan was not accounted for in the previously adopted budget, the Mayor and Commissioners would like to amend the budget to reflect this new loan. And whereas the following amendments will be made to the budget to reflect this loan, Department fifty, debt service, will be modified by keeping the proposed revenue at four hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty cents. The original line item expense for line fifty-five nine A was a hundred thousand dollars, but has come in less than anticipated at eighty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars, resulting in a positive cash flow of ten thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. This is addition to the surplus already in the department fund. Will result, this, in addition to the surplus applied in the department fund, will result in a balance of nine thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars after the loan payment is applied. Therefore, being it exacted and resolved that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun wish to adopt and propose fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-two budget amendment, order to proceed with the financing. And now therefore, be it further resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this eighth day of February two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution?
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash one.
Second.
There's a motion in the second on the floor. Is there any other discussion regarding this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one passes. Thank you, Town Administrator. Next on the agenda is Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-two, which is reimbursement resolution for tax-exempt vehicle leasing.
So this, this is pretty straightforward. Whenever you do tax-exempt financing, and there are times when we pay for the items prior to getting the loan financing in play. And according to IRS law, you have to pass basically what is called a reimbursement resolution. That means that you are going to take loan proceeds that you get from the bank, which are the previously adopted resolution to tax-exempt leasing corporation for the vehicles. We already paid for the code department vehicle, and we also already paid for the dump trailer. So we are going, our plan is to reimburse ourselves back from those proceeds. So you might recall, this is very similar to what we've had to do with the Chester water lines, the sewer plant, and the paving project that you guys did in two thousand nineteen. If you remember, we had all those delays in the Valley View development, and things started running together between the nineteen program and the two thousand twenty-one program. We obviously had to do things like pay the engineer that was doing all that legwork. And it was originally intended that the loan would pay for all that stuff. So in this particular case, we need to get ourselves reimbursed. So it's called a reimbursement resolution. So that's what you have before you.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh-two, a resolution declaring the official intent of the Town of Rising Sun to reimburse expenditures to be incurred with respect to certain projects or programs or from certain funds with the proceeds of debt. You know the boiler plates. Whereas pursuant to Section C sixteen, titled Appropriation, the Commissioners of Rising Sun may appropriate municipal monies for any purpose within the powers of the council. And whereas pursuant to Section C sixteen, the town is authorized and empowered to levy, assess, and collect ad valorem property taxes of any type of tax allowed by law, to levy such special assessments as may be required for public improvements to extend municipal funds for any purpose, to have general management and control of the finances of the town. And whereas the town adopted a fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget with amendments that authorize the purchase of one police car, one dump trailer for public works, and one pickup truck for code enforcement. And whereas to facilitate an efficient borrowing program, the town intends to expend money on certain vehicle purchases listed above and from certain funds prior to the issuance of debt by the town for such purpose. And whereas the town intends to reimburse such expenditures from the proceeds of debt to be issued by the town. And whereas to comply with applicable provisions of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended in Section one point one five zero dash two of the income tax regulations, it is necessary in order to reimburse such expenditures with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt that the town declare its official intent to make such reimbursements of expenditures. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and Board of Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun that it has evidenced by this resolution, the town intends to expend money on the cost of acquisitions of a dump trailer and pickup truck prior to the issuance of bonds or other debt obligations to reimburse such expenditures. With respect to such projects, the town reasonably expects to issue debt obligations for these projects in estimated maximum principal amount of eighty-eight thousand dollars. Now therefore, be it enacted and further resolved that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this eighth day of February two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion-wise, Town Administrator, should we add at now therefore be it further resolved that the acquisition is also of a police car? In addition to the dump trailer?
No, because we're not reimbursing ourselves for the purchase of the police car. We're going to get the loan, the loan company will pay for the police car when it becomes available. It's backordered.
Okay, perfect, got you.
That's why you don't see that in that line.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes, thank you. Town Administrator, ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one, which is amendment and creating of zoning districts, do you have that?
Yes, I do. I also have the town attorney on Zoom here for him to comment. Basically, what you have here is, this is the next two ordinances. Ordinances related to you moving forward with provisions that were spelled out in the comprehensive plan. If you remember back, I believe it was June of two thousand nineteen, after about three years of work on behalf of the Planning Commission, they put forth a comprehensive plan that called for a variety of different things. More specifically, germane to this ordinance was the desire to create or redefine certain existing ordinances that are in the town and to also create new zoning districts, so to speak, in, in the town. Now, this, this ties back to, if you remember in the comprehensive plan, there is what is called the growth area. And under the comprehensive plan, when you do it, you're not required to get into the specifics of future growth areas and what the exact zoning is going to be. As a general broad stroke, you're just required to say you're looking to grow your community into a certain area, and that area is going to be used for residential or commercial or industrial. You're only required to do the ten-thousand-foot view. But as we are well aware, we've been, we've been navigating through this difficult situation for a number of years now. Our, our community around the Town of Rising Sun is rural in nature. And the Town of Rising Sun wants to do its part in maintaining that rural appearance. However, there are those who often get nervous whenever a town, or in this case, the Town of Rising Sun, talks about expanding its borders because there is this assumption that we're just going to significantly change the areas outside the Town of Rising Sun in a manner that is not conducive to the heritage and the rural legacy that is around the Town of Rising Sun. So the town, in putting its best foot forward, did a little bit more work than just say we're going to grow into these areas and it's going to be residential. We aim to adopt the very same zoning language that Cecil County had. You guys remember that conversation we had it numerous times. Well, there are certain zoning designations that the county has, such as business general, rural residential, and NAR, northern agricultural residential, that the Town of Rising Sun does not have. And so in order, and I'm going to say it this way, to put our best foot forward and best faith forward, we realize that we, if we, if we're going to tell everybody that we're not going to change the rural character, then we need to adopt some zoning that at least mirrors what the county has in place. And so the county comp plan, or the town's comp plan called for the creation, among other things, a rural residential zoning district, a rural business zoning district, and a rural estate zoning district. So the rural estate zoning district is designed to mirror the northern agricultural residential district that the county has, meaning in general terms, the county requires ten acres for the construction of any single-family dwelling or any dwelling unit. We don't have any agricultural in the Town of Rising Sun, so we decided to adopt sort of the same language, but call it something different, and that is rural estate. And so under the proposed rural estate, you're going to see in this zoning ordinance, we would require the same ten acres for the construction of a residential home. The other item is the creation of the rural residential, which is designed to match the county's rural residential, in which the county requires one, one acre for every residential dwelling in a minor subdivision and three acres for every residential dwelling in a major subdivision. So we're adopting a rural residential zoning designation that matches that. The other area is the county has a business general, which in summary is designed to allow for more or less lower intensity uses. In other words, you wouldn't typically find a big bustling a big bustling supermarket in an area that the county has zoned for business general. And so what we did is we adopted a language, but we're calling it rural business. Meaning that you're going to see in the document that we're adopting language that allows the less intensive uses that the county already allows. But we're actually putting more of an emphasis of that development to closely match the rural heritage of the area around it. We also, this ordinance is going to call for the creation of old-town commercial. And if you remember from some conversations, and this even goes back to the day when Commissioner Pearson and Commissioner Warnock were on the Planning Commission when we were starting to get into this stuff, that in our downtown area, Main Street, that is currently zoned central commercial. But those central commercial properties are all what are called legal nonconforming uses. Meaning that the lots are too small based upon what our central commercial zoning calls for. So what that means is if any of our businesses or properties in the downtown area make an attempt to build a little bit bigger, build a little bit taller, cover more land, they could have to unnecessarily get variances in order to do that because they are on legally nonconforming use properties. And so what we did was we created an old-town commercial that basically approves all the businesses that are already operating in those types of businesses. But it will change the setback requirements and lot sizes to match what is actually, in reality, on those lots. So that when these businesses or properties go to spend money or invest money in their properties, they don't have to spend more money trying to get variances and special exceptions. So those are sort of the nuts and bolts of what is being proposed to be changed. Now, the next thing I want to advise you of, which you're going to see in the ordinance itself, is under state law and under town law, under the zoning code, you, somebody has to come up with the idea of moving forward with the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. What I mean by that is the Planning Commission has already had meetings where they've instructed me to put together some language to bring it towards you folks. But we feel it, it's more prudent for the elected body to take the initiative because the Planning Commission works for you, so to speak, in developing the comprehensive plan. And they've already given you a report on that comprehensive plan. So basically, what this ordinance is going to do is you're going to recognize that some of these changes were called for, and you're going to, we're going to read a summary of that into the ordinance tonight, but you're going to, into the record tonight, but you're going to instruct the Planning Commission to take a look at this ordinance to make sure it's consistent with what was called for in the comprehensive plan. And they would come back and make a recommendation to you at a later date. You are required to have a public hearing in which you have to advertise in the newspaper two successive weeks, with the last notice being no less than fifteen days before the scheduled hearing. So in summary, you're going to read this into the ordinance, or into the minutes tonight, which is going to start a clock. The Planning Commission is going to look at this ordinance, these ordinances, this coming Monday at their meeting. They're ready for this, they're aware of it. They're going to make a recommendation back to you folks, which let's remember, you are not required to accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission. But at a later date, maybe March eighth, maybe the, the second meeting in March, you're going to have a public hearing after we advertise it and notify the, the people of these prospective changes. The last thing I want to, because we're not going to read this entire ordinance in, it's very lengthy. All we're going to do is read a summary, but I want to, I want to make sure you understand what's happening here, is that we've created basically the enabling language in the ordinance for you guys to do something. And there are attachments that you will see towards the back. And those attachments list, list, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead there. Those attachments are for the next ordinance. The next ordinance. This is pretty much straightforward. We're going to read the summary into the meeting minutes tonight, and then that will start the clock. Jay, is there anything that you wanted to add to that? If I missed anything?
Now that you've covered all the points very well, as we can see everybody, this is a long time coming. It's a multi-year process to get you to this entity with those towns. And it's important that we follow through on that. So this sets the stage for what you want to accomplish. And this is a comprehensive process.
Aaron next to me. Aaron next to me. Aaron next to me. Change the speakers to speaker Realtek Audio, I think.
Hey, Jay.
Talk again?
Now you got to mute your mic.
Did you not get any of that?
No.
No.
There was some curls of wisdom just falling out on the floor. Just throw it around and pick them up. What I was saying is Calvin did it adequately. You understand the process you dealt with zoning before. This isn't out of the blue. It is a multi-year process from the comprehensive plan and comprehensive rezoning. And it is what is you wanted to do, the citizens wanted to do. You're finally taking steps to execute. So, you know, this is the next step of where you want to head for the town.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Did you get it that time?
Yes.
What?
You run the speakers on the, in the room that time.
Right.
So you guys want to make a motion to read this, to enter this into the minutes?
I move that we enter ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh-
This is Ryan. I could hear you perfectly both times. It sounds like you're giving me something at, at Town Hall in terms of their, their speakers.
It was.
Can you give me an applause? Because I got such a good thing, you know. I thought that first time was our dream. I know. I'm not. I don't even have them anymore.
Hey, hey, Jay.
You're, you're live, Jay.
Hey, hey.
Hey, Jay.
Hey, you've got to mute it. You got our microphones muted. And so they can't hear us, but we can hear them.
I don't think it's the case.
There. Hey, guys.
Hey, guys.
Guys, you're, we're conducting me.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. We had that whole conversation.
Well, how come you're already responding when I said you have any questions?
Because Calvin muted the microphone.
Yeah.
But he didn't mute the speakers.
So Ryan gave me the applause that I was looking for. So if you have any questions, I can answer.
No questions.
Okay. All right, Calvin. I move to, to enter ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh one into the record, to be right into the record.
So a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we want to read the?
No, until I said no.
I'm just going to read a summary. Thank you.
And the full text will be available on the town's website or by contacting Town Hall, they can get a copy.
Yes, that is correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Go ahead.
All right. So ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh one, in ordinance of the Town of Rising Sun, Cecil County, Maryland, amended existing zoning districts and creating and defining new zoning districts as recommended in the town's comprehensive plan as defined below, and to repeal any and all other ordinances and parts of the ordinances in conflict therewith. So that concludes the summary.
Thank you. And as Commissioner Warnock said, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one and twenty twenty-two dash zero two will be available on our website as well as in person here at Town Hall if you need to pick up a copy. Town Administrator, is there another? Is that covering both ordinances one and two?
No, you have ordinance oh two.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So the only difference in everything that I had said to you previously about the comp plan process and the work that the Planning Commission did is Jermaine to this. The only difference is, the other thing that was called for was to look at existing properties in the Town of Rising Sun that don't make any sense the way they are zoned. And what I mean by that is, we talked in the last, in the last discussion here, you don't want to create zoning that automatically creates nonconforming uses because it becomes very cumbersome for the property owner. And so there are properties, a handful. In total, there might be about fifty or sixty or more different properties that the comp plan called to consider rezoning. We're going to basically take a bite of that in what we're calling a phase one comprehensive rezoning. And so that's what basically ordinance oh two is. And we are, the comp plan identified properties that don't make sense. Now, what do I mean by they don't make sense? Some of them are the only property in a stretch of other properties. They have all the same lot sizes, but they're zoned totally different. And what that's basically, or commonly referred to, is spot zoning. And spot zoning is not a good thing to have because when you think about your days of being on the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission, one of the arguments that someone can potentially make in trying to get a variance is that they are not able to enjoy the same benefits of their property that their neighbors are. And so it would be a little sloppy to have fifteen properties all basically have the same lot size and have the same style house built on it. But because of some anomaly of spot zoning, the one property owner is not able to do what the other properties are able to do. And the Planning Commission and Board of Appeals would be compelled to look at that as a non-self-induced hardship and grant a special exception or a variance. But you're doing that in the confines of a zoning district that although it shouldn't be there, it still basically might say you shouldn't grant a variance. So if I'm making myself clear, that's one example of when you don't have the right kind of zoning, you can create all kinds of messy contradictions in your zoning code. The other things that we looked at is that we've learned a lot of things over the last twenty-some-odd years, since the early two thousands. And one of them is our residents, as you know, in the past, have complained about traffic in our town. And we've had two different traffic studies commissioned since I've been here and, and have called for, you know, or identified issues with traffic flow. And unfortunately, the, we don't have really a whole lot of physical room to redo roads and stuff like that. And we can't build a bypass over top of the town. So one of the jobs of the Planning Commission is to make sure that land that can be developed in the future makes sense on how it is developed. And so there's a battery of things that you're supposed to check off. One of them is traffic patterns. One of them is zoning that is compatible with other zoning in the area. The third item is where you're talking about growth or looking to change the zoning in certain areas. You want to make sure that the zoning that exists on a piece of property is going to be compatible with the zoning that you are calling for in other areas. So basically, the tone that we're, that we're using here is the reclassification of zoning areas. So in this ordinance that you have, you have all the boilerplate language that we talked about before, but there are attachments in here. And each one of those attachments is a legal description of each of the properties that are recommended to be reclassified. And it also gives the checking of the boxes according to state law and town code of the reasons that you can use to justify the zoning change that you're looking to do. So like, there's fifteen attachments in there. They probably cover maybe close to thirty properties. It is not all of the properties that are called for rezoning in the comp plan because it would just be, it's, it's just too big of a lift to do it all at the same time. But there is some libel reason that, like in one area, you're going to see where we looked at the properties in the northern part of town, and then we sort of make our way down to Main Street. You're going to see changes that will eliminate. If you look at the zoning map for Main Street right now, there could be four different zoning classifications running down Main Street, and some of them don't make any sense. For instance, you really wouldn't want to have light industrial in your Main Street area. When you think about what light industrial is, you don't have it in your downtown Main Street area. And you also don't want to have those types of things near residential properties. Because light industrial is using something, is usually where you're admitting something that somebody can smell, or you're doing a practice that's making noise or bringing in a lot of trucks. And that doesn't work too well in residential areas. So that's just a snapshot of the reclassification that we're doing. And it's all contained in your list of attachments. The same public notice and public hearings hold true. It's going back to the Planning Commission for them to look at it Monday night with a recommendation to be made to them. So if there's no further questions to me, Jay, is there anything that you want to add to that?
This is an important second step. In fact, this is the most important step. The last ordinance you introduced sets the stage. And this one actually carries out the intent. So it's very important that we follow through with this. And, yeah, it's been done in a comprehensive manner. Calvin looked across the entire town and saw what pieces he could start with and make. Because it's obviously a big challenge. But who'd make the most difference and make the most sense? So that's where we are.
Thank you. Is there another summary that needs to be read into the record or no?
All right, yes. You would entertain a motion to read it into the record and then read the summary.
I make a motion to enter ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh two into the record and read the summary.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrator?
All right, so this is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh two. An ordinance of the Town of Rising Sun, Cecil County, Maryland, amending the zoning classification of certain properties as recommended in the town's comprehensive plan as defined below, and to repeal any and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Town Administrator.
I believe, do I have to make, do we need to make a motion to send both those ordinances to Planning Board for review?
If you'd like to.
Okay. I make a motion that we send ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one and twenty twenty-two dash zero two to the Planning Board for recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion holds. Thank you. All right. Moving into citizens' input. Would anyone like to speak this evening?
That's you guys.
No? All right. Staff reports. Nope. All right. Staff reports. Town Administrator?
That's enough. I gave you, I gave you a lot to do.
We don't disagree.
We, we obviously have a lot of things going on in town right now. We, we do have more new home building permits on area lots. We have some exciting economic development prospects coming in. I've been meeting with various entities on what they'd like to do. We, we always wanted the glass in the town to be half full, and it is clearly half full now, heading in the right direction. So that concludes my report.
All right. Town engineer, excuse me, Town Attorney?
I have no other report. We've been working tirelessly on the zoning at this point in time.
All right. Town Manager, do you have a report?
I do. I'll make it very brief, because these are financials. You have copies to take home and look at if you'd like. If you look at our general fund, we are performing very solid and have been all year. Water, the water fund is also performing well. And excited to say that the sewer fund is also has a positive at this time. I do expect a large bill that we need to pay that we'll take that down though. But all in all, we're looking really well.
All right. Board of Commissioners, you did receive the update from Chief Peterson. He did have to run out. And you can see that before you. Any questions can obviously be given to Chief Peterson if you have any questions. All right. Town Engineer?
I hope you can hear me. As Calvin mentioned, there's a lot going on, a lot of good projects. I will give you a brief update, but as always, please feel free to ask any more specific questions if you would like me to elaborate. On the, follow up from the original CWA project, Chester Water Interconnect, we recently had the MDE inspector out of the site. They needed to inspect our documentation and get visuals, get confirmation of the static mixer in the water tower that was installed so that they could provide the grant funding that they agreed to. So thank you to Grant for providing us with that onsite tour. The state has everything that they need now, and they have issued the final inspection approval so that the town can now realize that funding from, from MDE. For the Mount Street project, we had a good meeting with Calvin, and we finalized the alignment, and we are updating the drawings and specs towards the final stage. For the Mount Street extension, we are looking to resubmit to the town on February 17. We are also updating the project alignments per that meeting to include some potential extensions on Cooper Reynolds and Buckley Street, and preparing the cost estimates for those additional streets, and also analyzing the hydraulic modeling to make sure the alignments and the sizing are correct, not only for existing demands, but also for future flows as well. And our survey team is preparing the easements and exhibits required for this project. We will be having a, what I call CIP meeting with the town truly, which is basically to cover all of the projects that we have in terms of water and wastewater extensions for future growth, but also for rehabbing these ordered of downtown lines. And so we're updating the overall map. We have a mono one visual, which I'm hoping is a helpful tool for everyone at the town. A visual says a thousand words. And so we have, we have an updated color-coded map that tells the story of the projects. And we also have the finances and the project costs associated with them on an attached spreadsheet. So just be aware that that is available and continue to keep that updated. Also, I had a very interesting call with Maryland's version, Maryland's Department associated with FEMA. It's MDE. Maryland's Emergency Management. And I was talking to them about some potential funding options for hazard mitigation. Mainly, I was talking to them about brick funding, if you folks are aware of that. But he opened up my eyes and expanded my horizon for several other funding options. And, you know, there are grant writers out there that make their whole careers realizing all the different funding opportunities. And whenever I learn about any, I just, I just want to make sure the town's aware of them. So I will be summarizing what I learned on that conference call and making that available to the town as well. And if there's anything that, that keeps your interest in terms of funding that are a big hit, I'd be more than happy to set up a follow-up meeting with the state about that. He was, he was very helpful. I knew those, that he formed his own call. So those are the items that I wanted to make sure I touched on. I wasn't happy to talk about anything else if there's any other questions.
Thank you, Ryan. All right. Moving into the Mayor's Report. My report is also pretty brief this evening. On behalf of the board, I know that we all want to congratulate the new ownership at Buck's Restaurant. They are going to be making some changes there. We look forward to working with them in their changes that they're going to be making at Buck's. Somehow, I got conned into another appointment. The Maryland Mayor's Association had a vacancy for their secretary position, and they've asked me to fill it on their executive board. So they met in an executive session and appointed me to be the secretary of the Maryland Mayor's Association. I look forward to representing the mayors throughout the state as we try to lobby on the behalf of Maryland mayors.
That means you.
I think that is basically the remainder of my report. I also did want to add, and I know that Commissioner Pearson may mention this as well, the loss of the three Baltimore City Fire Department members. Lieutenant Kelsey Sadler, Lieutenant Paul Bertram, and firefighter Kenneth Licaio. They gathered in a ceremony that was beautiful, Memorial Service Down in Baltimore to honor them. I know that the Rising Sun Fire Department was a part of that. And we did have a significant amount of people that went down to honor those firefighters. On behalf of the board, I know our prayers are with their family members, as well as with their friends and colleagues. Just a very tough time, and we'll be praying for you. Moving forward into Commissioners' comments, Commissioner Braun.
Okay. Okay. Prior to the pandemic, the Planning and Zoning Board was meeting twice a month, working on the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. After the pandemic, because of the lockdown, we had very little opportunity to meet. Recently, we have been meeting again, trying to meet once a month. And beginning March, we're planning on meeting twice a month, expecting that we're going to be having a lot of work come our way.
Thank you. Commissioner Pearson?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for your words. It was a very difficult time. I happen to know Paul, and people do not realize the impact that it actually had on this community. Our fire chief is actually the driver on that shift, and he lost two of his shift members. As a retired Baltimore City firefighter, it was really tough, because I've been that route before. Would like to thank the town for sending some refreshments to the firehouse, even though they were not in Baltimore. It affects everybody. If you saw the number of other towns and municipalities that filled in the city stations so that they could attend that memorial service. Just, it's, it's a bigger brotherhood and sisterhood than just what you, what you may see as the guys riding down the street on a fire engine. So it's a difficult time. Even though I'm not active, it still is right there. But it's like everything, you have to get back on the bicycle and ride. And they did. And I've done it. People in the future will do it. It's just something you do. Calvin, you've been this route too, so you understand what I'm saying. Again, thanks for, for all the support.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Upcoming town meetings, we do have a meeting on February the 22nd. Oh, sorry, Commissioner.
Well, see, no.
Sorry, that was.
They cut it off here.
Yeah, so it's.
He didn't have to list anything.
We don't really have reports.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. I actually, I mean, I don't have much report, but I would like to welcome, so are, are we doing something for Boy Scouts or Eagle Scouts?
No.
Just, just attending town meeting?
School.
School? Okay. So whose, so whose class is it that, the young man here?
No. They're homeschooled.
Oh, they're homeschooled. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
They're?
We're, we're speaking.
Got you, the teacher.
Got you now. Okay, so.
Well, that must be the teacher.
I missed that part when I came in, because we were busy with other things. But okay, so we're here learning a little bit about government functions, I guess. Okay, very good. We get a lot of Boy Scouts that come in for their, what is it, citizenship badge?
Yeah.
So, or government badge or something.
This was a long meeting.
So, and I was thinking it might be something along outlines, but that makes, okay, so it makes sense. So you guys learn anything?
No.
No. Okay. Okay, it was, it was, yeah. It was actually a good one, because there was resolutions and ordinances, so we did a lot of different stuff in this meeting. Okay. Well, with that, I don't have any further comments. Actually, one thing, we've gotten a number of people have reported to us the broken locket at Dog Park. We're well aware of it, and we're working on getting it fixed, but be patient.
The parts are already ordered.
Yeah, the parts are ordered, and, but knowing how things are right now, who knows when we'll get them in, hopefully soon, but, you know, supply chain being what it is, you know, just hopefully we get them soon. And we are aware of it, and we're working on it. So with that, that is my report. Thank you.
All right. And since I skipped over Commissioner Warnock, I did pull up the remainder of the agenda online. We also did want to officially welcome you, Gary, as our enforcement officer. We're glad to have you on board. All the board members have gotten a chance to meet you, from my understanding, and we look forward to having you as part of the town of Rising Sun. So welcome officially. Moving forward into upcoming town meetings, February 22nd is our next town meeting. We will be closed on President's Day, which is Monday, February the 21st. You can see trash, recycling, and yard waste online, the calendar for that. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening?
Do you have anything to say?
Hearing none. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved second.
It's been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.